I didn't know she was still here.
I'm never sure.
I mean, I.
Two minutes.
This discontinuation.
I sent fifty dollars down to Jody Sims for the sign that says, School Board for the, for the golf tournament.
Oh, okay.
And he said, give me a little money for that.
Okay.
But if you don't, don't worry about it.
Yeah, no, I will do that.
Six thirty.
Is it time?
Hey, my, when we walk out, I got, I got that, my wallet's in my car, I got that ten dollars for that. For the golf outing I want to give you.
You will?
Yes.
All right, it's six thirty, it's time to call the meeting to order, we'll start tonight with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have no media present tonight. We're gonna go ahead and jump right into headliners, this is great news from around the district. This is for tonight's meeting on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, we're gonna start with the FFA program. WICO FFA hosted another successful sheep and goat show in the Academy Barn on June twenty-fourth. And at the ninety-fourth Indiana FFA State Convention, we want to congratulate Hannah Thomas, Amy Brown, Cohen Shipper, Ally Ryden, Rydenauer, Maggie Wolf, and another team of Ally Brown and Sophie Keener, who placed first in state competitions and will advance to the National FFA Convention in October. Second place state winners were teams of Amy Brown and Justine Okun and another team of Justine Okun and Anna Sikkafus. Also competing at the national level is our Wildlife Habitat Team, and they will travel to Iowa July thirty-first through August second for national competition. And sports, our summer sports camps have been up and running. We have the Athletics Department that has initiated several summer camps with softball July twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Baseball will be July twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, and cheerleading will be July twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. The volleyball, tennis, and basketball wrapped up in June earlier this month, and in earlier this month. The football camp has two more days to go. And golf, of course, is in full swing with the Booster Club's nineteenth annual golf outing, Saturday, August twelfth, at Sycamore Golf Club in North Manchester. For more information about the camps or the golf outing, you can see WICO Wildcat Athletic Facebook page. And finally, for back to school, we have back to school night Wednesday, August the ninth, from five to six thirty at South Whitley Elementary, Thursday, August tenth, from five to six thirty at Pearson Elementary, and Thursday, August tenth, from six to eight at the Junior Senior High. We look forward to welcoming our students back for another great school year. Being the middle of summer, we don't have any special reports or presentations tonight. So we will turn this over to Mr. Pavarnik for his superintendent update.
Um, thank you, I just had the Feed the Children update, the donated school supplies, new books, miscellaneous food items, estimated value of eleven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents, we always appreciate that. And so I have updates right now.
Okay, thank you. We have no public comments tonight, so we're gonna move right into business reports and consent agenda. We've all been given that to look through, and I need a motion to accept our business reports and consent agenda as accepted, or as presented.
My move that we accept the business reports and consent agenda as presented.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the business reports and consent agenda as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye, and those opposed, the motion passes. In new business, at seven point one, we have the approval of the ARC English Language Arts Curriculum as recommended by our Curriculum Director, Chris Evans. Could I get a motion for that, please?
I believe that we approve the English Language Arts Curriculum.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the ARC English Language Arts Curriculum as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes. In seven point two, we have the approval of the Little Cats Assistant Director Job Description, could I get a motion for that, please?
I move that we approve the Little Cats Assistant Director Job Description.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the Little Cats Assistant Director Job Description, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. And seven point three, we have the approval of the WCA Toolroom Coordinator Job Description. Could I get a motion for that, please?
I move that we accept the WCA Toolroom Coordinator Job Description.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the WCA Toolroom Coordinator Job Description as presented, is there any discussion?
We need to change the place of business from Northern Gases to purity cylinder gases in that description.
So noted, in the bullet for, and I'll bring this to the office, Theresa, Northern Gases is purity cylinder gas, we just make that edit, and we're all good, I've got it right here to bring to you. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. Seven point four, stipends for WCA teachers Emily Murphy and Megan Anderson, can I get a motion, please?
I move that we accept the motion for stipends for the WCA teachers Emily and Megan.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the stipends for the WCA teachers Emily Murphy and Megan Anderson, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes. And seven point five, we have the approval of the elementary school and junior senior high school textbook fees for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, could I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve the elementary schools and junior senior high school textbook fees for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the elementary school and schools and junior senior high school textbook fees for the upcoming school year, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. In seven point six, we have the approval of media contacts for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year for distribution of press releases and announcements, could I get a motion, please?
I move that we accept the media contacts for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the approval of the media contacts for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes. Seven point seven is the approval of the cell phone allowance list as presented, could I get a motion, please?
I move we approve the cell phone allowance list as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the cell phone allowance list as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes. And finally, for new business, we have seven point eight, which is the approval of the annual field trips, plus the FFA Wildlife Habitat Team competing in Milford, Iowa, as requested by Chris Benedict. Could I get a motion for the field trips as presented?
I move that we accept the annual field trips and also the FFA Wildlife to Milford, Iowa.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept and approve the annual field trips and the special field trip for the Wildlife Habitat Team as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
No ones opposed, so the motion passes. In old business, we have the approval of a second and final reading of the Neola Recommended School Board Policies, Volume Thirty-five, Number Two. Can I get a motion to approve these readings, please?
I make a motion that we approve the second and final reading of the Neola Recommended School Board Policies, Volume Thirty-five, Number Two.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve a second and final reading of Neola Recommended School Board Policies, Volume Thirty-five, Number Two, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes. Mr. Pavarnik, any miscellaneous administrative items?
Just welcome all those that were on the agenda tonight, that were approved for positions, I know Justin's up there. Anybody else that I missed out here that were on the agenda, welcome to Woodville, we're proud to have you, and looking forward to year three.
All right, miscellaneous school board items, just mark your calendars, the next school board meeting is a work session, it's on Wednesday, August the ninth, at four o'clock, here at the Academy in the Taff Room. And the next school board meeting is Monday, August twenty-first, at six thirty, right here in this lecture room. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we're adjourned, thank you for coming, have a great afternoon, great evening.